I'd like to call the order of the common council meeting for September 22nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Roll call.
Alderman Madden.
Here.
Alderman Kubaki.
Here.
Alderman Engelhardt.
Here.
Alderman Capusta.
Here.
Alderman Terrence.
Here.
Alderman Hamel.
Here.
Alderman Wolf.
Here.
And Mayor Pofalski. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
The meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Public comment, I have not received any cards. Moving on to communications from the mayor's office, I have just a couple announcements. Trick or treat hours this year will be on October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I am asking people that are participating in trick or treating to put their porch light on. That way, the trick or treaters know which houses to go up to and which ones not to. We'll also do a press release regarding that, but. And then, next week, Monday, Waukesha County will be commencing with their box culvert replacement on Racine Avenue, so just south of Pioneer Drive. Racine Avenue will be shut down for approximately two months. It's going to be a hassle, but we had a choice between waiting till next summer, which would have been better for school, but by next summer, we may have that water project coming through from Waukesha, so we can't have both those going at the same time. Library Board met last week and discussed closing the library during the election. So both City Hall and the library will be open for voting during, on Election Day, on November 3rd, but neither one will be available for other services that they normally are. So they'll be both dedicated for voting on those two days. And that's all I have for communications from the mayor's office. Moving on to public hearing, you want to read the notice of public hearing, please?
To consider the petition of Senior Housing Partners Presbyterian Homes to grant a zoning amendment to the previously approved planned development district for the purpose of allowing an additional three feet in overall height for the approved senior building facility located at West 147 South 6800 Durham Place, tax key number 2168.961.
Adam, want to give a little synopsis of it?
Thank you, Mayor. So this proposal is pretty simple. Back in November of 2019, the council, as you guys probably remember, approved a planned development rezoning based upon the R and W multifamily zoning for Senior Housing Partners and Presbyterian Homes on the former site of the Test Corners Elementary School. You've probably have seen on the site, the building has since been torn down. Any issues with asbestos and stuff have all been remediated, obviously before it was torn down. And now, the development team is kind of getting further along in the development process. So they have been refining their building plans. They want to make sure they can provide a product that is not only favorable to their residents, but also competitive in the market, as this type of industry can be pretty competitive, making sure you're offering something great for the residents that would move in there. One of the things they kind of realized as part of their development of the actual architectural plans was, the height that they proposed was kind of squeezing the floors a little bit, if you want to word it that way. And what they're realizing is the way the layout was, was going to cause a lot of architectural issues as far as only requiring recessed lighting, or only allowing recessed lighting, I should say, things like a lot of boxed out sofas, things that would make those rooms feel a little squat. And in the competitive market that they have, and wanting to keep things open in areas, especially with the COVID situation, they really want to make sure they can develop a product that's going to be usable into the future and not trying to squeeze something in from a vertical standpoint. So what their numbers basically show them is they need to add a foot to each of the three levels. Now, this project, as part of the planned development, did already ask for some height waivers. So, as a reminder, the way we measure height is not to the peak of a building. When they have a peak roof, we measure to the midpoint behind the overhang in the peak. So we call it the midpoint of the gable. And what this allows is some flexibility in architectural design as far as combinations of wall heights and roof pitch. So in their scenario, this site fronts, you know, Janesville Road, and at Janesville Road, it's a two-story building, and that area was approved with a midpoint height of 27 feet. They're asking to go to 30. 30 is allowable by code. So they don't need a waiver from the height along Janesville Road, as they're asking to be at what's allowable already by rights. So that's not really the question. But since this property also has Durham Place on the west side of it, and Durham Place slopes westward, on the back of the building, which is closer to Durham Place, and the neighborhood's adjacent, the property's lower. So as such there, you're going to see three exposed floors with kind of like a semi-exposed garage area that's underground. That area, the height was proposed and granted a waiver to be 37 feet. So normally, the code's 30. They asked for 37, which was granted by the Plan Commission to that midpoint. They're now asking for that to go up three feet also, because they want one continuous roof line along this project. And then, that new height of where the 37 was, they're now asking for 40 feet to be the required, the allowed height there. So that's really the emphasis of this project. There are some notes you'll see in the application, that's included in the packets, that talk about some minor architectural changes to the footprint. That is not part of the rezoning request, that will be a Plan Commission BSO item. This is really the question of, are we willing to allow the zoning ordinance to be amended to allow those three additional feet in height?
One question, one I have so far before we go to forward. We, for one, we received an email, which I would like you to read. But in addition to that, so there's a question that I've gotten. The egress and entrance from Janesville Road, how will that affect this property?
So, they kind of split this project into two different parking areas. It was always known that there were traffic concerns. You know, a lot of people we know in the past were cutting through bushies. That's always been a, you know, point of concern. They are, they did receive approval, we've heard tentatively, from Waukesha County for an access for their own site, so not to connect through on Durham, but for their own site directly to Janesville Road. That access along Janesville Road is going to be kind of servicing the front uses of the building. So that's going to be for things like employees, potentially a visitor, things like that. There's also a separate entrance that will be off of Durham Place. That entrance is strictly for limited deliveries and. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm with the development team here, actually, I think the deliveries come off the front. The back area is for residents, because the underground parking is for residents. That area that is going to come off of Durham Place, which there is an access proposed that was previously approved off of Durham Place, is going to be for residents to access the site. So, there will not be the ability for people to cut through, so people are worried about someone using it as a shortcut. The two parking areas are completely disconnected, and that was a very intentional design element of theirs after talking with us, because we didn't want another situation like Bushies, where you could have that cut through, as that's been a source of, like I said, problem in the past. So, you know, residents would access off Durham Place, which is pretty minimal, because a lot of these residents don't drive. It doesn't mean none of them drive, but a lot of them don't, given their medical needs or age. And, like I said, visitors and stuff like that, and deliveries will mostly be off of the Janesville Road access, which is completely disconnected. There won't be the ability to have a cut through.
Will the reworking of that area cap that cut through from Bushies? Or will it still end up being an issue?
It shouldn't. You could maybe make the case that it will probably no less than now, because there's no school there. When the school was there, I'm sure it's a lot less than when the school was there. I would think it's no different than now, is there's not a lot of people that will be there cutting through that area to access that site. I mean, if there's already neighborhood people that uses a cut through, that's not going to change.
Okay.
And yeah, so I don't know, Mayor, if you want me to read this to the record formally? I did forward it to all the elected officials, and we did receive one email concern, and it related to speeding and just traffic in the area and access. The contents of the comments were not specifically related to the height. I don't know if you want to read it, or?
Everyone got a copy of it, correct?
No.
I think we're okay.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I think you're okay.
Okay.
All right.
You guys have any questions?
No, we're not voting on this today, right?
No.
It's just a hearing, right?
Just a public hearing.
I'm sorry, I thought you had a question.
No, that was my question.
And this will be going to the next Plan Commission for recommendation, and then back to you guys at the following council from there.
Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to come up and be heard? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and.
Bob Gallos, I live on Test Corners, W 143 S 6834, Test Corners. Just a question about that Durham Place thing. Why was that ever cut off? It makes no sense to me. I live on Test Corners, all that traffic comes past me now.
Some of us made a mistake and approved it.
Can't we fix our error with this whole program?
County won't, it's a no-go with the county.
Why?
They like limiting, well, the way.
The two streets meet? The two streets have to meet?
I can't.
So they're offset, is what?
Send me an email. Send me an email, like, can I have a, it's a public hearing, we can't do it back and forth. I'm sorry.
It just never made sense to me.
The utilities, movements.
And I've been here before in front of you guys about the speed limit at Test Corners.
I screwed up.
They still go 40, 45. My daughter, I'm just saying, when I get to the bus there, I'm outside going. You guys got to slow down. So, if anybody wants to put a police officer in my driveway from 6:45 to 7:15, monitoring traffic, I'm all for it, but I'll send you an email.
Send me an email, or call me, either way. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Is a petitioner here? If you could state your name, who you represent, that'd be great.
Good evening. You'll have to tell me if I have to talk louder through this.
You do.
There we go.
Or stand closer.
Good to know. Thank you, and good evening. I'm Pamela Bells, the project developer for Senior Housing Partners, representing Presbyterian Homes Wisconsin for our new Muskego project. I'm a new face to you, so I wanted to be sure, just to say a few words to introduce myself. I live at, okay, let's see, 2845 Hamlin Avenue North, Roseville, Minnesota, 55113. This PD amendment request was submitted on behalf of the project for your consideration and addresses a couple of elements. The most important being the height request variance. And I apologize that we had to come back and ask for an amendment for this, but as we worked on design development and details of the project came to light, it was right about the time that the influence of COVID was beginning to be felt as well. And COVID really has influenced, case in point, the way we interact with each other, which shapes our physical environment, and it's reinforced the importance of natural light and uplifting spaces, and confirmed the necessity of opportunities for outdoor experiences, especially in our senior housing venue, where a lot of our campuses are still only on outdoor experience with family members. So that's shaped the expectation of our future residents and their family, and made us really think hard about changes that we need to bring forward to deal with these influences. We want to be sure that we create the best environment for our future residents and exceed their new expectations, and create a vibrant and successful community for years to come. Part of this, with increasing the height by the three feet that we requested, does allow us to do, change the structural components, which allows us to eliminate sofas, which would be down all the corridors and in all of the apartment units. So we gain some ceiling height and space there. We gain a little bit of ceiling height as well, which will allow us some, a little more residential feel. It allows us to use taller windows to bring in more natural light, both to units and to common areas, and it allows us to get rid of some of the support columns, because we've got less, we can use a different structural system that has less load-bearing walls. So we can eliminate some columns, which also helps light penetrate some of the common areas and town center spaces. So we're really aiming to create a much more uplifting, bright, bring in more natural light, which is great biophilic design element, and create the best environment that we can for the residents. We did enclose renderings that show the difference in the height, that I hope you've had a chance to take a look at. And we also have taken another look at outdoor spaces and added a fire ring, and we're looking at a bocce court, because those are really popular at our other campuses right now, and we'll take full advantage of the landscaping, the potty and green, and the gazebo that's out by the pond, just to create different opportunities for residents to gather and socialize with their friends and family. So I just wanted to make those few points and let you know that, who I am and that I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing done, I'll declare this public hearing closed. Continuing on with the agenda. Consent agenda. Approval of operators licenses, approval of minutes for September 8th, 2020, resolution 077, 2020, approval of Timothy Dalitz's developers agreement, resolution 076, 2020, approval of an amendment to the inter-ministerial agreement between Town of Norway Sanitary District Number One and the city of Muskego. Could I have a motion for consent agenda?
Move to approve and gross.
Second.
Any separate discussions on any of these items? Hearing done, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to new business. Review of committee reports for the Finance Committee for August 25th, 2020. Committee, the whole, August 25th, 2020. Moving on to first reading of ordinance is a possible second reading if the rules are waived. First item, ordinance number 1448, an ordinance to grant a planned development amendment to the approved PD zoning district for the housing, senior housing partners slash Presbyterian Homes development. Do anything besides read it?
No. It's coming up second, next meeting.
All right. Next ordinance for first reading is ordinance 1449, an ordinance to amend chapter 278, section 278-5 of the municipal code of the city of Muskego, public waters, beaches, and speed restrictions.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Why are we doing that?
So, this one, we're, it was made, I met with the Lake District, probably this first or second week of the Little Lake, first, second week of being in office, and they came in and they pointed out that our code had changed from what it was. So this, so we were proposing putting it back as the way our code always was. When we codified our code at some point, switched over to, what was that service?
The service unit? Gen code?
When we used gen code, it got changed without anyone giving any input.
I don't know how that got changed.
We don't know how it happened, but it got changed to be from dawn to dusk, instead of from, till 8:30, 8:30 PM, which if, every time this is brought up, it's a very contentious thing in the lake. Thus, why they brought up, our signs were never changed, so you go to all the boat launches, that all has the old information, so all I'm trying to do is fix the code to match our practice on this.
So if it's sunny out, you can't go on the lake till 8:00 AM?
You can.
You can, you just can't go.
Can't raise your weight, can't go fast.
My question is, is the 8:30 PM, you know, sometimes it's going to get darker before that.
Like tonight?
Like tonight?
Uh huh. Another month or two.
So as long as it's dark, and it's before 8:30, you can go as fast as you want?
You can go as fast as you want until 8:30 right now.
Right.
Well, you will if you, right now, you can legally.
You can go as fast as you want until dusk right now.
Right now, because it got changed, however, the police are enforcing it under the old rules, so.
So what are the old rules? I mean.
The old rules are what we're proposing putting it back to, because that's what everyone around the lake has always argued for strongly.
Well, there's more than one lake, and our Lake de Noon would like to keep it at dusk.
And you can, because I believe this only covers Little Muskego, correct?
Oh, it says all area lakes.
Oh, is it all?
Yep.
Well, you can make an amendment on the second reading for that.
I would like to see it dusk, because to me, dusk makes more sense than.
I mean, hunting's dusk, everything's dusk. I mean, to have somebody go out there at 7:30 or 8 o'clock at night.
I don't disagree with any of this, but all I'm going to tell you is, if that's a motion or a direction you want to go, we really should get feedback from the Little Lake District and let, because we think this.
You can do that the next two weeks.
And I will do that, yeah, and that's fine, but.
This is just the first reading, right?
This is only the first reading, but if that's the direction you guys are leaning and going, I want to just notify them so they can weigh in, because.
Fine, it's just safety concerns, that's all.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just telling you, I know from history, this is a very contentious, it's right up there with putting a speed limit on the lake.
Their annual meeting is next Thursday, next week.
Okay.
We'll fix it by winter. That won't be on their agenda for their meeting now, because that's already printed, I think.
Oh, like two days from now? They can amend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll have to amend it, because I think they published that already for the public.
No, they can make an amendment.
So it's good you're discussing, you've got a chance in two weeks.
If you want to.
To change this. You'll be able to vote in, right way in.
Can we put a, should we, are we putting a recommendation out right now that they should look at? Is that what we should do?
What I'll just let them know is that we'll be discussing this, and they should kind of give some sort of recommendation.
But are we leaning a certain way that we should recommend?
No, well, I shouldn't answer for you, I guess.
I mean, you got Bob and Kevin on the same page.
You guys can have conversations on this tonight as you want, and I think that might, the minutes might dictate that for people.
I'll express my safety concerns, and my concerns are public safety. I think leaving it at 8:30 is great in mid-July, but certainly not in August or September, and I'd like to see it stay.
Dusk to dawn.
Or go back to, or be changed to dusk till 8 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
So the complaint you're going to get on that will be, and there's probably a way of wording this, you know, that's why we, Mayor Jeff for the big bucks is, in the summer, where it is done at 8:30 and it's light until 9:30, I think they like that extra time. So if there's a way of wording it that we could do it, that as long as it's light out type thing, you know.
Dusk to dawn.
Dusk.
Well, dusk, but dusk, it does.
Dusk is dusk.
It wouldn't be that hard.
You're right, you're correct, yes. I'm just thinking this.
I think that, I've been, I mean, we've been doing this, several of us, for some time, and I haven't heard any, anything brought up about people complaining about anything.
Yeah, zero.
I think we're looking to fix something not broken. That's what I'm looking, I think, I think what we have in place, my recommendation is if we all agree with Kevin, since he brought it up, and Bob kind of second is the same opinion, is the recommendation is the legal is the same, as will be our recommendation to the Lake Commission.
Which way are we leaving it? The way that everyone thinks it is and the signs say, or the way that, because that's why this is brought here?
The way we think it is, right? Dusk to dawn, is that, what does the sign say?
Dusk till 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM.
So dusk till 8:00, dusk till 8:00 AM right now is not how people in the lake think it is, or our signs say. It's buried in our code, it got changed without any.
And what does the sign say?
The sign says, the way we're, till 8:30 PM.
I think we should do the dusk to dawn, I think. Try to keep all, dusk to 8:00 AM, try to keep all the lakes the same if we can. That would be my proposal.
Well, I'd like to weigh in on, for behalf of Little Muskego Lake, and it's not my opinion, it's just to say something here about it. When it's after dusk, when 8:30 is after dusk, this time of the year, boat traffic is greatly diminished on that lake. In the summertime, when that, when that's before dark yet, obviously, there's not been any great problems, and, you know, boaters are out there and busy until then. But they pretty well do respect it on the lake, is for my observations. So I would say, if you did, you change your signage and say when dusk is prior to 8:30. You'd have to put that wording somehow in. Otherwise, leave the 8:30.
I think it should be dusk.
Accept that.
I mean, every lake I go on is dusk. I mean, this is the exception to it, but.
I mean, if it's a safety thing, then it's light, and it, to me, I don't, I wouldn't, not that I don't care, but if somebody says, hey, I want to be out there at 8:30, if it's not safe to be out there, then your opinion unfortunately doesn't matter. Sounds bad, but safety, safety, right?
I think before we would vote on anything like this, we should hear from the Little Lake District, we haven't any issues on it.
Just give a recommendation, that's what.
You can give a recommendation, but I would leave it at that.
Yeah.
That's my point, you just kind of, and bring it back in two weeks.
Exactly.
At least they know kind of what we're thinking as a whole, right?
And I'd like to hear from that group.
Yeah.
So, that's why it's here for your information, it's just that we had two.
We have no idea how it got changed.
None, and hopefully, there's not other stuff in our code like that, it just was brought up. All right, moving on, ordinance number 1450, an ordinance to amend chapter 67 to rescind section 67-7 of the municipal code of the city of Muskego. Mayor and council order of business. Reason this is on here is, my opinion is, we don't need to have it codified in code and how the order of business is on our agendas. We're going to have an agenda, it's going to be posted, it's going to have the stuff that's required by state statute. Right now, it almost goes into telling you what kind of punctuation you need, and I think it's a little one of ours.
This is an old thing that's been done in codes forever, and I agree with the mayor, there's nothing that says you have to have this codified. You know, that's why we're just saying, take it out.
Yep.
I wouldn't expect to see many changes in your, in the way we do the agendas going forward, but just the fact that it's on there is.
I think it kind of gives the public an outline of how we do our meetings consistently. You know, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of nice. I don't know, am I missing something? Why we want to take it out?
Show me one person from the public that goes and reads the code. They read the agendas when they come out, but.
But when you present the agenda, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, no one goes through the code and says that this should be.
No, my point is, it gives you, it gives us an order, and you kind of, people, I mean, if it's in there, I mean, I don't know why we would, we'd want to change, I mean, I don't know. It gives us a, an order.
We publish an agenda.
Yeah.
It tells the public exactly what we're going to do during that meeting, and what, you know, and what order, and because some of this stuff is silly, that, you know, you have to have this, 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 well, sometimes you don't need all that stuff.
And the code says shell, so technically, we're supposed to go exactly the way this is, and that's archaic. You know, we can kind of change these things around and put them the way you want.
Yeah, a little less government is fine with me.
That's kind of my thought.
When we have that thing about approving a agenda each time, though, we have the right to change it at that point.
You do, yes.
But that's kind of a late point to change it at, you know, if we wanted to change.
I just kind of like that as a guideline.
Just opens the door for change ahead of that.
Well, it doesn't, and the approval of the agenda doesn't give you the authority of changing the agenda, it's just because you approve.
No, change the order.
Changing the order or stuff.
Yeah, not, not, yeah, I misspoke, not the agenda itself, but the order, yeah.
But there's items on there that just, I mean, cities officials report has to be on there, even though I know there's not going to be a cities officials report today. There's things like that that I can take care of during our planning, our agenda planning meeting, just take it out. It's just one, it's minor, but it's kind of foolish that I even have to read it off. So, that's why that's coming forward. We can have more discussion on that next meeting. Ordinance number 1451, ordinance to amend chapter 12, section 12-7 of the municipal code of the city of Muskego, library board. This is simply, and I know this isn't going to be a popular one, but it's what state statutes state we have to have for appointments to the library board. Aldermen, and anyone, school district reps, it's a three-year term.
Even though our terms are two.
Even though our terms are two years, so it makes no sense.
It makes, it makes no sense, yeah. What is the school district term?
We all take it all to uphold the state statutes, and what would happen in that case, if, you know, if somebody's not on it, they would, it's a vacancy that gets, that gets filled through another appointment.
So the.
For the remainder of that term.
They don't have to formally resign, if their term is up, they're out.
They're out.
Now, if I understand correctly, we, because the state says it, we don't have to adapt it.
The state, we, we all take it all, yeah, it's a state statute, we do have to, actually.
No, kind of like what we did with appointing the planning person, I think that takes away the power of the council, but, and I think that we didn't have to adapt that, we could actually go back and change that back. So if I understand correctly, this is, we don't have to adapt the state statute on this.
I'm not sure why you're saying that.
We don't have to, it, we could do our own local statute on this.
You're saying we don't have to follow the state statute?
Right, same thing with the appointment of the planning alderman as well.
So we are actually with the plan, we are following the state statute. My policy on that as mayor is to let you guys vote on it, and whomever you guys vote for is who I appoint. I'm following, I'm getting guided, I'm getting guided, but we are following the state statute.
We don't have to, I think if I understand that correctly, we can adapt our own. That's my discussion right now. I'm not saying right or wrong or I care. I'm just saying the point is, is that, because every time it's a state statute, it doesn't always have to be followed.
And, yeah, and, and these, and these types of instances, um, my opinion is you have to follow the state statute. If someone comes in and says, why are you having a one-year term when the statute...
Because we have two-year term, uh, what is, what is the term of, uh, a, a school district? Is it three years?
Three years.
Three years, so that's, we're just trying to even it out to what they're doing. So i- it, technically, we have a two-year term, so we can't follow it.
We can, because you get more than one, if you get, if you run for one, more than one term, you just can't...
Oh, yeah, I understand, I understand, a theory, that's a theory.
I don't write the, I don't, I don't write the state statutes, I'm just, I just took a note to uphold them.
I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, I just think it's kind of crazy, you know?
I, I don't disagree with you, but it's one of those things where we're, we're at odds with what the state statute is, so that's why it was brought forward.
But my point is, I don't believe we have to, we have to adapt the state statute on here.
I mean, I can look at that, I, it's my opinion, you do have...
We're not voting on this, yeah, take a look, I mean, just so we can be squared away on it.
All right. Any other input on this tonight? We will have another kick at this, uh, next meeting.
Well, it's a great campaign thing, you say you can't vote me out, I got one more year to vote.
Yeah, still got to vote on the library thing.
I got three more years after that, three years.
Moving on to license approval. Approval of a Class A license for QuickTrip Inc., DBA QuickTrip ten-eighty on Janesville Road, Steven Ward Agent.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Approval of an outside dance permit for Tailspin Bar and Grill on Martin Drive, October one-two-eight fifteen, twenty-second and twenty-ninth from six PM till nine PM, and October seventeenth from eleven AM to nine PM.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Move, approval on outside dance permit, amendment to license premise for Parkland Lodge LLC, DBA Lucky's at the Lodge on Janesville Road, October fourth, twenty-twenty, from eleven AM to eight PM.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Approval of an outside dance permit for Mark's Pioneer on Pioneer Drive, October thirty-first, twenty-twenty, from two PM to ten PM.